Hello iPhone, can you identify yourself so we know who's on the meeting?
I think that's Will Anderson.
Thank you.
Another attendee has popped up and I bet that is...
Hello Rebecca, can you hear us? Councillor Stavenger, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you.
Well with that, we have four out of five. I didn't get an answer from Mr. Chumadi, so I guess we'll go ahead and start. He will probably be here shortly, so... Oh yeah, sorry.
Stand by.
Okay, we're on air for our June 17th work session. Two of our councillors are on Zoom. And one of them and the other will probably walk into the room shortly, but we'll go ahead and get started. So I'll turn it over to Laura Weigle, our planning manager.
Thank you Laura Weigle and crew. We've got Jen Garblehurst, a city engineer. We've got Matt Hugard from our consulting team and Ryan Dyer. We seem to be tied in the hip these days, going through all of these maps and plans and talking to people about the TSP. So we were here just a couple of months ago, so I'm not going to kind of go back and say how we got here and give you a brief overview, because we've only got an hour and we've got maps. And what we're here primarily focused on with you all is to talk about any questions, concerns, comments you all have about all the maps that you had in your package for tonight. So with that, have you got that?
Yep.
Can I just ask a clarifying question upfront? The maps were followed by lists. The lists are not in any order, is that correct? Are they prioritized?
Oh no, they're not prioritized. So that's our next step. Yeah, yeah. These are just all of the projects. Then we're going to do the prioritization, so we will come back with the prioritization of all those projects. Right now, we're making sure we've got the projects. So basically, yeah, just kind of like... Well, I just kind of, so everybody knows, to your point, Mary, what we're doing right now is we identified the gaps in the system. We developed the classification maps. We developed the priority maps. And now we're going out to everybody and saying, hey, did we miss anything? Did we get this right? What do we need to add? What do we need to remove? What do we need to improve? That kind of thing. So that way, when we go through, after we talk to all these people, and I'm going to do a little recap of who all we're talking to, that we will come back and then evaluate all of the projects. And so that gives us to a list of projects that, one, we can afford, which might be this big. And then a much longer list that we can still keep going after money, you know, trying to find funds for it. Okay. So that was super fast recap. And so basically, we're looking at pedestrians, bicycle, roadway, freight, and transit maps today. And so just quickly remember what we've done is we developed the classification system for each of the modes. And then we also looked at our priority areas. The priority areas being parks, schools, the town center, neighborhood hubs, underserved populations such as the Hillside area, Wichita, the community center, and some of the senior center locations. We built these heat maps. And that's kind of how we got to project lists for each of these different modes. And so really, our whole purpose here tonight is to say to you all, did we get the projects right? Are we missing anything? What do we need to know from you all? And so we can start with the pedestrian maps. And I think, Ryan, did you re-...
Yeah.
We can switch to an interactive map. So we've got, as part of the Engage Milwaukee platform, we will be asking the community members these exact same questions that we're asking you all. We're having our, we're getting so off community, sorry, Engage Milwaukee will be up tomorrow. It will be up for, oh, practically three weeks, I think. Then, because our big public engagement meeting is tomorrow night. And so we'll be showing all these exact same maps to everybody tomorrow night and then have all the exact maps online. And so we're coming to you tonight. We've taken these to the technical committee. We've taken them to the advisory committee. We've taken them to the planning commission. And we filled in some questions from councillor Anderson. All of those changes are not yet incorporated into this set of maps, because we need to get everybody's feedback before we get to like the project list, because we can't just update it every single time. There's not enough time for that. So we've kind of got this ongoing list of comments that people have given to us up until that point. There's this couple of things like adding some language around coordinating with the agencies that we need to coordinate with, that we don't have jurisdiction override. So it's like coordinate with ODOT 2, coordinate with TriMet 2. So because we want just people to be aware that we don't have all the power there and that we've got partners that we need to work with. So we're going to clean up some of that language. Also, we've got some pedestrian projects.
Like an intersection, say across 99.
They don't have corresponding bike projects at the intersections. We're going to fix that. So there's little cleanups that need to be done. So we're just tracking all of those things. So I just wanted you all to be aware that these maps are not perfect. They're not going to be perfect, because we're still talking to people and we're going to go out to folks. So with that, I think I would just probably jump into, do you all have any particular, specific questions on any of the projects that you wanted to talk about? Or have we missed anything by looking at these maps? Do we miss something and we need to talk about that and getting it added?
Starting with pedestrians.
Starting with pedestrians. That's where we are, yeah. First thing in your packet, which you've got up on the screen. Ryan, if you've got any questions, Ryan can click on each of the project numbers on the map and it will pull up the description. Now, one thing to keep in mind is that descriptions are specific enough that we can give cost estimates for them, but also flexible enough that depending on the situation, you know, all the streets are different in Milwaukee. We have different right of way. We have different improved areas. We have different classifications of streets. So there's a little flexibility built into the TSP. We're not designing whole segments of street. This is loosely what this needs to be in the future, so that we can develop a cost for it. So that's one of the next steps that we have to do, is getting the dollar figures for all of these projects. And so yes, that's why we're here tonight. Answering any questions you all have.
I have, I know that you, I know I've heard the answer to this before, but could you just give us a short recap of the major city walkway, neighborhood, and the differences between those three?
Yeah, Ryan, you want to dig into that?
Yeah, the, so it's a functional, let me see if I can get the packet as well. Yeah, so the, when we came to you last, I think this is what we were discussing. We, really, this, you know, this came out of our sort of conversation about greenways and creating a robust bicycle network and trying to get a better understanding internally about how we were thinking about our, the role that different facilities played in the city's bike network. And so we went down this pathway. We developed the functional classification with Kittleson's recommendations for the bicycle network. And then we were like, why aren't we doing this for all of our modes of transportation?
Yeah, I remember the discussion about trying to synchronize those.
Yeah, and so, yeah.
We always have a street classification, right? So it's just mimicking what we do for our streets for cars. Let's just replicate that and understand what the connections are.
For other modes. And so for, you know, major, so for pedestrians, major city walkways are the sort of highest class of facilities. So it's where you would expect to find the widest sidewalks. It's where you would expect to find, like 32nd, for example. Also zoning that is maybe, has development standards, that is creating a more robust, enhanced pedestrian environment. And it's also where you, you know, we've tried to sort of design it so that there are continuous connections across the city. So that's why you'll see, you know, things like King. You know, King, you know, Jen is currently working on, you know, redeveloping the pedestrian facilities along King. It's where, you know, it's a continuous path across the city. There are a lot of important commercial uses that are adjacent to King. We want to make sure that we have the best pedestrian facilities possible along King. And then sort of as you, you know, you step down the ladder, you know, we're also trying to recognize, you know, city walkways are still important connections, but maybe you're going to see less pedestrian traffic. And then neighborhood walkways are sort of serving as those like key connections, you know, to those city walkways or major city walkways. And so the, and the key in all of this is looking at, if you recall the memo that we, you know, included in the packet when we were talking about this last time, are the sort of descriptions for each functional classification. And, you know, each of those descriptions, again, sort of talks about the role of the facility within the larger network and talks about the types of improvements that you would expect to see. Because, you know, you're going to need different sort of, you know, improvements along King, which, you know, is also, you know, adjacent to, it's also an arterial. You're going to need, for people to feel comfortable along those facilities, you're going to need different types of improvements than along, you know, something like Logos Road, which sees less traffic. It has slower speeds. So you wouldn't expect to see necessarily the same type of, you know, pedestrian environment than you would along some of, you know, our major city walkways. Does that answer your question? Okay.
So do all of the ones that qualify as city walkway and neighborhood walkway, so everything in green and blue, is that calling out for separated pedestrian facility, separated from the streets?
Not necessarily, because you see also, you know, routes like 19th are, you know, listed as neighborhood walkways. Those are blue, but that's a shared pedestrian, it's a shared environment for all modes. So it's a little bit dependent on, I think there's a relationship to the, you know, existing conditions in terms of land use, in terms of, you know, what we would expect from particular traffic and speeds along those routes.
Where they get to and from, trying to make sure that we've got all these connections built in.
Yeah, so there's some flexibility within each sort of description. And the focus is really more on like, what role is it playing within the larger network for, you know, our system of walkways for people?
So just to kind of summarize, Ryan, I think this map you've got up here, the classifications, what's the role it's playing in the network? The map that you have for the projects, proposed projects, so figure three pedestrian projects. Then you're starting to show treatment type that takes into account the context pieces you're just talking about. And on that one, you can see like 29th in our wall, 19th in Island Station. Those are shared roadways, because that is really the better treatment for the existing context that we've got in those.
Yeah, and I think, you know, what Laura was sort of leading off with is, you know, how we got to the, you know, the project lists, how we developed these list of projects was, you know, was twofold. It was, A, really looking at that functional classification and saying like, okay, we've identified these as being our most sort of, you know, important pedestrian routes within the city. And then two, looking at, you know, that sort of heat map that Laura was talking about, which is, you know, saying these are the most important areas within our city in terms of connecting pedestrians. These are, this is where pedestrians are like, are most likely to walk. These are, you know, key commercial corridor or commercial nodes. These are parks. These are schools. These are areas where, you know, we might have more vulnerable pedestrians. And then, you know, looking, looking at those heat maps and saying, where do we have gaps within those areas? And then we propose projects for those gaps. Kind of a multi-step process. I know it's a little, hopefully that makes sense.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's been a really good testament to the work that we've been doing with the advisory committee, is that by the time we got to this project list, there weren't a lot of comments. Like there are little bits and pieces of things that people brought up, that people are feeling pretty confident in the maps that, the projects, because they've been, they understand how the projects got here. And so I think that the analysis that was done is kind of like, it's proving out to be an analysis that working, that people can understand. And that we're getting the projects that they thought would be identified, identified. So that's been, that's been good, working with those folks.
Yeah, and there's still, I'll just add on, but there's still, there's still quite a bit of flexibility within what these projects end up actually looking like for Jen and her team. What we have is kind of, if you look at the legend for, you know, each of the modal project maps, you'll see that there are these kind of like large buckets of projects. So there's sidewalk projects, you know, which is just going to be your dimensional sidewalk, could include a landscape buffer, could be a curb tight sidewalk, but it's probably going to be, you know, five to six feet. And then you have, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, Jen. And then you have, you know, our on-street bike pathway project bucket, which is something you would see like on Linwood, for example. And this ties back to the conversation I think we had, you know, two meetings ago, which was about those level of traffic stress targets. You know, these are, you know, we identified those stress targets that we wanted to achieve in the city. And, you know, these, the buckets that the project falls into are, this is what would be required to achieve that level of traffic stress target. So if we want along, you know, King, if we want King to be pedestrian level of traffic stress one, we need, again, we need the most sort of enhanced facilities possible. And that's like, that's the type of improvement that we see along Linwood. You know, it's wide, it's eight to 10 feet, it has a buffer, you know, a vegetated buffer. So there's, it's sort of all these conversations that we've been having kind of thread together. But you'll see these kind of large buckets, which again, have flexibility, you know, in terms of the final design. But generally, this is, these are the types of improvements that we would be looking to see, you know, for pedestrian projects. And each mode has these sort of large buckets.
Going back to the first slide. Yeah, so if you look at the, you know, north by northeast area of the city, you know, that just looks like an area that, that isolated compared to the other parts of the city. I'm just trying to understand what the rationale there is.
Wasn't the development patterns, there's nowhere to put anything.
There's not a lot of through.
There's not a lot of through streets. If you look, if you can look closely on that whole, like say that area in the northeast, there's just not through streets. So there's no good pathway.
There's a lot of industrial area up there along, is that Johnson Creek? Yeah. So that takes in, you know, a lot of slice of it, but I'm just...
And we've got Johnson Creek identified as a major, as a major walkway.
Along with Linwood.
Yeah.
I'm just looking if you were, you know, if you're trying to get from one side of, say like the eastern side to 42nd. You know, and you wanted some sort of pedestrian way that you felt comfortable with. I mean, you can get there, you know, along the other streets, but I guess the question I ask is if you kind of wanted that really safe sort of area that either had a, either had a designated walkway or a shared walkway or whatever. You kind of have to go roundabout. So that's just like, it's just a general comment.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with you. I feel like, I mean, people will still walk there whether or not we've got it right in designation on it. And I think at one point, we actually had a designation that kind of lead up through Johnson Creek and...
Region Drive.
Regions Drive.
Yeah, I came up with the planning commission as well. Yeah, yeah, I think it's a challenging area because of the, you know, development pattern.
It's similar to working up in Hubs too, and why that is a tricky area for...
It's an old, it's a different, it's an older start of development. There's just not a lot of connections through that. Yeah.
It's also not to say that there wouldn't ever be pedestrian facilities placed there. It was, I think, you know, with the functional classification, it was, you know, the need from a, you know, a sidewalk perspective in Milwaukee, as you all know, is rather significant. And so this was, I think, just our approach to try to focus a little bit.
Well, there's a lot of plans to do.
I do, there are three, three safe projects that haven't been built yet. They're out in that area. That'll still be on the list. So some, some work will be happening still in that area. At some point, you can find money.
Going back, Ryan, one thing you said about like the project list and then how there's still room for dialing in specifics within hearing when those get funding and move forward. One I know you were very interested in, Mayor, is 37th and pedestrian access to Minthorn Springs. It's on your map, I think, as P10, and it's kind of called a sidewalk project on 37th. So is that kind of an example of, it's not calling out, we're going to build a crosswalk, middle of that road right here, but it's saying that's the area where we would be looking at pedestrian improvements. And as part of that project, we would look to be there.
Exactly, right. Because I know that, Mary, you've had that concern about crossing over to Minthorn Springs, but we have concerns that it's too close to the rail. And so we're not exactly sure where the right place to put that crossing is. And so we would do that analysis as part of building out that project.
Sidewalk project is probably 10 years away, right? It's not really high on our priority list. And it seems a shame not to put just a crosswalk there so that people can get to the train.
Because of the railroad.
It's not that close to the rail.
From what I, I just, that's...
It's about midway from the, from the Marketplace driveway to the rail.
I think after conversations I've had with them about small transportation projects, that would be a good... I mean, there's no NDA there as much, but to work with someone to do a spot grant for that program, it seems like that. As I've been talking through some of the projects here, there are some things that are smaller in scope. But now that we have a spot bucket, engineering and planning staff have pushed me in that direction as opposed to a larger TSP project.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up councillor. That is very true. Because you're right, Mary, we're not going to get that sideways. It's not going to rise to the top of the priorities, right? It's just not because we've got other higher priorities, right? Things are going to rise above. So maybe that is one of those great little things. And if we can figure out the right place to put it, make sure we don't run into a rail issue, and then make sure that we're leading people, just not leading them to nowhere. We want to be safe with it wherever the crosswalk goes. So, but maybe it is better as a spot.
Well, there is a sidewalk.
Marketplace side has, it's not the other side.
Then it just drops you into nothing. So you just have to think about that when you're putting a sidewalk thing.
I mean, there's a trail here. So that's the logical place, right?
To Robert's point about connectivity in the Northeast section, you've got some projects listed along Willow that connect to Howe. And I think that that's one thing that they're looking at to try and build more of that network, connecting some of those streets. I think if you're doing those projects, as we look back at the functional classification, it might be good to extend that neighborhood walkway designation. it might be good to extend that neighborhood walkway designation down the length of Willow and Howe. Because you'll, you've got, let me find the projects. You had, let's see, E45, 39, and 46, all create that connectivity.
Yeah, and I will tell you that E45 or 46 are related, I believe, directly in front of one of the properties that I am definitely talking up in this whole, this acquisition and this Metro Community Choice Grants, because there is a green space there that I think the family would, you know.
And 45 and 46, did you say, already?
Yeah, on Willow Street and behind, between the back of, of Llewellyn Elementary and Michelle, oh, Michelle Park.
Yeah, because now it says it's an unimproved bike pathway, but the idea is to build a multi-use pathway.
Yeah, those were just gaps. And I believe both of those segments are actually maybe already right-of-way. And yeah, they're just unimproved. And so I think we just had, you know, identified those as, again, yeah, you know, pathways that are already being used by people and what could we do to just make them.
You know, that property in there, Laura will know, is the one that is, that is coming up in the natural resource. That's the property that, for which the whole design was the condensed development, if you protect the rest of the development that you said we don't need and the natural resources we're taking out. But that's the property.
Okay, got it, right.
That was.
Right.
Back to the day.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think the owners of that property would love to see that property committed to public ownership. So it'd be great to have to see that. Other questions, comments about? I will admit that I have, I looked at all the maps, but I had a little bit of a household emergency today and I did not get to look at the lists in the detail I wanted to. But I was happy to see that there are some of the connectivity pieces, like the Olson crossing into the, into the industrial area, Olson to Melwell. I think that's a great one. So yeah, I was happy to see some of those pieces. I mean, one thing I guess I'd like to see, and this doesn't just relate to Penn, but I'd like to see, before we get to hearings, a list of what things are in the 2007 TSP that are not here. Now, if they're not here because we built them, great. But if they're not here and we didn't build them, why are they not here? I'd like to have that list.
We, I mean, just off the top of my head, that probably knows us better than anybody because he dead that whole cross track, right? And so we've brought forward everything that hasn't been built into this one. Or if there's been a conversation about, with all of our, with our advisory groups and with the planning commission, like, a couple of things. I think there was like the idea of a new transit mall that had held over, which we know that there's not, that's, we're not doing that because that's just not part of what we've been talking about. There's not an interest appetite for that. But we have actively tried to bring everything forward. And somebody just, if it didn't make sense anymore. But there's not that many of them, Matt.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's, there's enough to make it easily to identify.
Yeah, I was thinking make the list. Yeah, because we built a lot. Yeah, we brought over, and we brought over everything from like the NMIA plan. And we went, we went through all of the plans to make sure. And it's funny, from the NMIA plan, is a lot of people have been like, are we really going to do that? That seems really, really dreamy. And we're like, well, we're bringing it forward because a lot of work was done on that. And so we're staying in the plan.
There might have been one or two that we dropped in that NMIA plan. Just that we're like fully dependent on complete wholesale redevelopment of.
An industrial area that's probably unlikely.
I mean, there were some of those that were about connectivity in the Sellwood, right? There was a Penn Bridge back that way. I still think it's a great project. I think, you know, these days, well, yeah.
We know what we brought over. We've got a list that, sort of, behind the scene, working list. And we've gone through and said, this is a pulled-over project from the TSP, or this came from the NMIA plan, this came from some other source. We've itemized that out. It's just not, I mean, part of this packet. We can provide it.
Okay, great, that's right.
Other questions, comments on Penn before we move on? Counselor, oh, Counselor, Council President looks like he.
The one other thing that I'd say, it's kind of a Penn project, it's kind of a car project. We list P12, P13, and P14 as all of the crossings from various roads over to Milwaukee Bay Park. But one thing that's happened is the Transportation Act, which has evolved, is there's an extra $250 million set aside for a great streets program, which would include jurisdictional transfers. It's 250 millions to basically improve streets to then transfer over to cities. The JT Committee was set up last BNIAM, and it only had two projects that applied that accounted for about $100 million. So it's one of the rare programs that's kind of undersubscribed, and they're increasing funding for the program. So I think, what I'm trying to think is, could Milwaukee quickly put together some type of grant to see some real improvements in that area? I think that our P117, the Kellogg Creek, or the Kellogg Dam removal could also maybe be eligible for this type of great streets grant. But if we do that, is it valuable to identify like an entire McLaughlin improvement that goes basically from like Harrison down to River Road? Or is there something that we can do there?
Well, I don't really know. I'm just thinking about like, what would the coordination take with ODOT since it's not our road? So we have to be kind of in lockstep with them and making sure that anything that we're doing is actually condoned and supported by ODOT.
Or, Council President, are you suggesting putting it in as a JT?
That is.
Jurisdictional transfer.
That is what those grant, that's, is what those grant.
So saying, we'll, we want this from you.
Sorry, I, yes, that's the bigger question, I suppose, on the table. And I think that there's been some conversations. I wasn't here when those conversations happened. I think that Kelly Brooks talked, you all talked about that a lot. And I don't know if Jen was here when those conversations happened. So I think that there's kind of like, there's the good and the bad about jurisdictional transfer, right? And so really, the city council, we'd have to kind of do an analysis of like, what are the benefits and the costs of doing a jurisdictional transfer? Because in the past, there wasn't an appetite for it, as I understand it.
Because of the condition.
Yeah, because of the road condition.
Well, and I guess that's what this funding is for, that you get money, you know? Somebody told me Tyers asked for $50 million to take over Hall Boulevard or something. So it's that kind of thing. You get a big chunk of money, and you take responsibility. And, you know, we hear all the time that we can do it more cheaply than ODOT can do it. So it's a more efficient way for us to do it. But I agree, it's, it's a big conversation.
It's a, yeah, we just apply, right. We just don't go, I think there just has to be a bigger conversation.
So are we talking about Milwaukee taking over this section of 99? Because I don't know, does that, is that, is that, are there any examples of that?
The city of Portland just did it with 82nd Avenue. They took that over from Portland. There's talks taking Powell, who has 26, over from. But the, but it gets stuck in very political quagmires because ODOT would love to offload them without doing any of the deferred maintenance.
Right, right.
They keep pitching that. And it's like, here's your moment, you're in the TSP. Let's talk about that jurisdictional transfer.
And I hope, Jen, you know this better than me, with JT, are they willing to look at like small segments like that? Like a Harrison to River? Or they really say, take all of McLaughlin?
No, no, it'd be a small section. So I sat in on a couple presentations about what, what that would look like. And it would be a small section.
Okay.
We already have, it dropped the, the speed limit through the city to 30 miles per hour, which is the lowest along 99. Yeah, pretty, I think, except for maybe when I should get to Portland on some stuff. So I think at that time, we said, no, we don't actually want additional lights. I mean, maintaining those, you know, signals are significant. Like, those are big signals all along there. Like, we would have to really think about like what kind of capital that would increase. I'm trying to get, not add any more signals, but just, that's something to think about. Like, those signals are really expensive. And yes, we'd get a pot of money to update them, and you still have to maintain them for the life after that, so.
Is that three signals or two?
Three, plus if we do River, that's a fourth one.
Yeah.
I do think this is honestly also related to the red light and speed on green cameras that you're considering as well. And so as we kind of step into some conversations with ODOT about that, that might be the space to start dabbling in these conversations again.
One other, going back to Joseph, for dam, the Kellogg Dam removal, I thought, I thought I heard that they were looking at adding some additional upgrades in McLaughlin in that area with that project as well. Is that not?
Not.
Like, they were going to go out for a big grant. I heard that they, you know, they were going to add. So they were going to look at, I thought, all the way to Harrison.
Yeah, design's not confirmed fully yet, but.
Blue, yeah. Anyways, just as.
All the way to Harrison, not just south of Washington?
So I, I, that might be a rumor, but anyway, that's another way to approach getting some of those fixes. I mean, it is expensive, but it's also an amazing opportunity to do something very cool. I mean, if you just think about Lake Oswego and State Street that goes through Lake Oswego, I mean, that was an ODOT facility, and they ended up taking it over, as I understand it. And now it's, it's a completely transformed area. I mean, Lake Oswego has a lot of money to do a lot of things, to be clear. But it just really does transfer, it's transformative. And so there is that opportunity, but we just have to figure out how to maintain that.
Well, and I think the point is, if we can't go below 30, we weren't allowed, if we took it over and weren't allowed to go below 30, well, yeah. There is a cost benefit analysis for sure. We can't make it a slower street.
But signal management would go a long way because I'd cross that all the time running and biking. And you just wait, and then you're terrified. Yeah.
No, I mean, is it conceivable that the overhead walkway would, could be included?
Overhead walkway.
Embarrassing.
I think the big thing is, if Tyre is getting 50 million for their allocation for Hall Boulevard, we're talking about like a significant chunk of money that could reimagine the road. We'd have control over the signals, which helps for red light cameras. It also helps for, as we develop Milwaukee Bay Park, tying that more thoroughly into our main street. So I would say, we might not have all the information to jump now, but this is a good, if 250 million is set aside in the transportation package, it's something that, if we can try and posture and be one of the first cities to do it, we have the potential to really get early money that's not as competitive.
I'm just stunned that they're, they're going to increase this, this fund if it's undersubscribed now.
I think the argument is, ODOT has a lot of jurisdictional transfers. I mean, Metro did a great study of all of the different JTs throughout the metro area. Ours is one of the top prioritized ones. And ODOT.
Mm-hmm, it's in the top two, yeah.
You mean, ODOT prioritized them? We didn't ever request it.
Metro did a study.
We did a study, yeah. It was part of that study.
Yeah.
But it's a big conversation. I think the reason they add the pot of money is they hear from cities, we will not touch this because we don't want to have to maintain it. You have such a bad quality of road already. And they realize they need to be able to increase the quality of it, so.
And that's a conversation I hear at mayor's tables all the time. I don't think we're particularly early in, so I guess I don't think we have to be in a rush because I know Tyre and, what is it?
Hood River.
Hood River have them in. I think Gresham is on the verge. You know, I think several cities have them, and they've been working and thinking about them for a while. Beaverton, that whole Beaverton, Hillsdale, or Walton Valley. I can't remember which one, but there's one. Yeah. I think Counselor Savard had her hand up.
Thanks, Mayor. I, it was, it was a while back, so I'm going to try and just tie a couple pieces in. I wanted to echo your point about the, the projects that were in the last TSP. And I know that a lot of community members are really interested in making sure that we've marked lists, marked projects off lists. So I didn't, I mean, not to say that there's any additional work needed in that area right now, like for the planning staff. But I think as we move into hearings on this, it will be something that I think community members will be bringing up. So I just wanted to add that. And then the other piece about ODOT, I was wondering, what is the, what's the mechanism that we have within the TSP to identify our interest in moving toward either shared ownership or taking over ownership of particular parts of 99? You know, is, is there a policy statement that we could put into the document or that's already in the document that, that could be highlighted? Just kind of showing our intent? Or is that just something that's, that's communicated in the meetings that you, you are in as staff?
I think if I have the, if I hear the question, I think that, I think that it would be important for the city council to actually agree that that is our intent over time to take over that section of road. So we don't have a policy in the plan now because we haven't had that conversation. Because previously, I think the city council was not interested in moving forward, taking over that. So that would be a conversation that would need to be had with this.
Okay.
But I do think we have, we, we don't have a goal or a policy that states, you know, we want to pursue jurisdictional transfer. But we do have many goals, policies, I think, that talk about 224 and 99 as barriers. So I think that there's, you could, you know, infer from that that we are looking to have maybe more control. We're, we're looking to address issues on those facilities. Jurisdictional transfer might be one way that we would do that. But I think, yeah, we have, we have policies that talk about the importance of overcoming those obstacles, I think.
Yeah, that's fair, that's.
Okay. I, I think that's really helpful. I've seen in some plans, you know, like a, almost like a call-out that says, you know, the, the future of 99, and just sort of outline like, we, these are the identified challenges that we see. We are interested in moving forward with, you know, a, a more community-friendly roadway that runs through the city and, you know, would be, I mean, this is, of course, council decision, you know, to even articulate that we would be interested in talking about jurisdictional transfer. But, you know, I would say, within that conversation, it'd be helpful to just kind of lay it out as like, you know, but we realize that in that discussion with ODOT, ODOT, we need to identify the maintenance requirements and, you know. Sorry, I'm not, I'm not being perfectly clear. But I do think that it's worth putting something into the document to say that this is, it is something that we foresee in the future of transportation for the city, that something is going to have to be improved. And whether we do that in partnership with ODOT or if we, if we do that in a negotiation of jurisdictional transfer. That, you know, this is a 10-year document, so it would be helpful to put something in place now.
Yes, Counselor Savard, I agree with you. I think to Ryan's point, we've got it kind of in bits and pieces of places saying, yes, we want to do things on 224, these are major barriers. We want them to be better in the future. But I don't know that we've explicitly called out, like had a paragraph or a section that said, 99, 224, we really need to address that. So I think that we can incorporate something like that in the plan. If I hadn't read all of the text in so long, we might actually have that statement. I will circle back and see if it's there, and if it's not, we'll beep it up.
And just to confirm, like, would we have majority consensus support for, for putting something like that in here as sort of a policy? I'm seeing the nods that I.
At this point, it's just an option to, to eliminate the barriers.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, anything about making them less of a barrier, but I don't think, I don't think we know enough to call out jurisdictional transfer. And I will say that, that whatever conversation council supposedly had, it was before 2015. It has not happened since I've been on council. The current configuration, when they dropped the speeds to 30 and Boulevard guys created the islands in the middle and got rid of the parking that used to be on the west side, happened maybe around 2010, or something like that. So that's, that was probably the timeframe where that might have been just explored.
Yeah, it doesn't have. Hasn't happened, yeah. I just heard, I just heard, oh, we talked about that, and we're not going to do that now. Okay, up.
I just have a question on, on, maybe I missed this, but on, on lighting for these infrastructure, right? Specifically on Railroad, you get towards the Aquatic Center. It's a very poor-lit stretch of, like a block, block there. I mean, there, there's lighting on the sidewalk, but you can't really see anything driving through there at night. So we're going to be putting like more pedestrian and bike infrastructure. Are we going to be looking at better lighting, especially for at night? Because it's, it's really dark in that stretch. There's no lights on, on the south side of Railroad going all the way down towards the Aquatic Center. It's only on one side of the street. And it's just, I've heard a lot of complaints about that. Even driving at night with your headlights, it's hard to, hard to see people on the road.
And I'm going to have to come up with, or Jen, or like, that would be something that we could do. If we, where, do you work on Railroad, that could be included in it?
Yeah, we do it on a project-by-project base usually.
Yeah, okay.
Citizens can put in a request. Citizens can put in a request, Public Works, there's an actual form. Then Public Works does an analysis, depending on what, if, what that analysis comes out, if they warrant another pool to be added with lighting. We pay PD, so we pay one big fee.
So are you talking about this stretch, um-
Like, once you cross Linwood-
East of Linwood?
Yeah, it's very-
Okay, so there, the houses aren't in Milwaukee, but the road is in Milwaukee, right? Because that's from when we annexed the college.
Yes.
Right, so those-
Uh, there is a section of the houses on the uh, north side-
Oh, are they?
That are. I get some complaints of people trying to turn onto-
I see your comment there.
They can't make a left, um, because people are driving too fast.
Yeah.
So we just, we haven't done a project, you know, it hasn't, it hasn't been in our CIP. But we have identified a project in, in, as part of this TSP.
It's good to know that people can request lights, because yeah, that's the area where Wilder Parks lives, and yeah, I do, I do hear that complaint too.
It's just super dark at night, and you can't, even if somebody was riding, it's so hard to see anybody driving east.
So I just, I think it might be good to do a time check, because if I understand correctly, you all have a hard stop at five, because you have another agenda item. So, and we, there's, there's, and I know that it's a lot of information, there's so many projects, obviously, we can't go through them all, um, but, yes.
Well, I was gonna say, I think you could probably do that executive session in forty-five minutes, if you wanted to go until five fifteen, and I can tell Catherine to be there at five fifteen, but it's your fault.
I think it's just a matter of how much, if people have very specific questions about the projects that we can do now, or if, if everybody's looked at the maps carefully and have some kind of, you know, thoughts around the projects.
Well, we should move on, at least, yeah, move on to bikes. I have most of my questions around transit, I will tell you, so.
So bikes it is. Anybody wanna bring up anything on the bikes?
The one thing I'll say, if no one else says something, um, there are some areas, like Twenty-Ninth, um, that don't have any improvements listed. I've been working with Jacob Sherman on a spot application for some treatments along Twenty-Ninth to see different safety measures. But I would be really curious, I think there are some cheaper interventions, the scope of what Jacob has been working on along Twenty-Ninth Four is like twenty thousand dollars for the length of the street. I'd be curious, outside of, kind of like the mayor was saying, for Menthorn, outside of the scope of the TSP, would it be possible to put together some type of line item in our CIP for greenway placemaking and improvements, like we've talked about as a council?
I think that's a question for, for Jen.
I think we could definitely explore it. I think that would be something helpful to know if we have consensus direction from council, as we are right in the throes of developing the proposed CIP, um, to bring it to you, starting in kind of this fall, through the budget committee process. So if, we know, we've heard it a lot, um, I think we've been trying to do things through SPOT, but if there is appetite for, hey, we're gonna have a TSP finish, it's gonna show us where our major city bikeways are, and we want to see a CIP project about treatments and placemaking along those, um, that's a toolbox. That'd be helpful direction to get, if you agree, Jen.
Yeah.
So that would be separate from SPOT, we would still have SPOT for other places, but it would kind of take the greenways out of the SPOT?
At the moment, we don't, we just show that SPOT for this bicycle, so we need to make a decision if we're gonna continue that program. So those are two, you can, you can either combine them, or you can do them separate, um, either option is fine, yeah.
I see them as kind of separate, where I see SPOT is, so far has been helpful for projects that don't meet the muster of engineering, but people still would really like to see in their neighborhoods. Um, I see a benefit there. The greenway stuff, I think, is small, relatively cheap interventions that we could do to create connectivity on our bike map, and kind of to the point of what we've heard around Twenty-Ninth. See if there are placemaking things that we could do to create a real sense of, like, this is a greenway that you're on, versus this King Road that you're on, this feels slightly different. So I'd see those-
Get those projects ahead of time, like where those locations are, because if you're just putting a pot of money, that doesn't help my team to like know where, like, if I have a CIP project, I need to know the boundaries of it, at least that helps.
And I wonder if the classification map could help us with that? Like, is there something where it's, it's treatments within a toolbox, because there, as we talked about, there are shared roads, we're gonna have differentiated paths, but it's along the major city bikeways, investments in, in, in placemaking and uh, right-of-way treatments that help you know you're on a major city bikeway, with weight finding, it's green paint, it's, and diverters, it's, it's, it's a whole thing, but, but using that classification to give you the geographic map, you know, it's still a big area.
I'm just saying, like, what happens if it's not enough money to do everything, and then who makes that choice, right?
Well, I was gonna say, I didn't think we were talking about major city bikeways, I thought we were talking about greenways.
Uh-huh, which is, I think, to, what staff will say is, greenway is a treatment type that we might apply to different classifications of bikeways. What I might say is, we can stay at the thirty-thousand-foot level. We might say, I would say, in some of our city bikeways, in some of our major city bikeways, but not necessarily neighborhood ones, we'd love to understand what some placemaking and safety treatments might look like, at a cheap and limited scale. And you can come back in our CIP conversation with the scope of what that might look like.
It's like, we propose sort of what a geographic, or which, which of those bikeways we prioritize for that CIP.
Well, I mean, Stanley has sort of its own plan, if we ever get to the Safe Routes to School money. Monroe is happening. Railroad is to come, hopefully to start being planned soon. So it's really about Twenty-Ninth and Nineteenth.
I could see Twenty-Ninth, Nineteenth, I could see, so the south part of Stanley isn't included in that, um, safe grant. So it might be that, and I could see Forty, Forty-second and Harvey is the one other spot that I kind of see. We've got nothing on Forty, and people will speed pretty quick down that road. Um, and then Forty-second and Harvey, making sure that we have connectivity there.
Forty-seventh, Forty-second and Harvey is under, out to bid right now, so you will see some improvements there happening. Okay, I think I'd like to pick your brain a little bit more to define that scope, um, because what I don't want to happen is we have this bucket out there, and then the engineering is like, okay, what do we do? What do we, what do we select? What are we things? And then we totally miss the mark, and then people are like, well, why didn't you, you know, do this? So I would like to put in that CIP a little bit more concrete of, with some flexibility, but like, just kind of what streets are we trying to like hit, so it's kind of clear that, um, we, we can create a scope for it. And it's flexible in the sense of, like, what we can do there with all these different tools, but just kind of having just a little bit more to find of what you're expecting. That's great, you listed off of you, so let's, let's put that list together. And then you can still have this SPOT program separate, which I, I do love having the community being able to speak up and say, hey, I have a problem in my neighborhood. I think the only thing I'm having a problem with is the um, flashing Rapid. They take a lot more work to do on the engineering side, but, yeah.
I'll also add, just, just quickly, that we do have this category, this buckets of projects, uh, called shared lane projects, in our bicycle project list, um, and at the risk of adding more, uh, work for that, um, if there are. So those include, they're pretty generalized, um, so like the one I pull up on the screen right now, um, you know, is uh, B forty-seven. It's along Windsor Drive, uh, and it's, the project description is install shared roadway, lane markings, signage, traffic calming improvements, um, i.e. the types of things that you would see along a sort of traditional greenway. And so if there are, if there are, you know, facilities in the city that, that aren't showing those types of projects that you would like to see.
These are the pink lines on the bicycle projects map, and the one that I think sticks out is that Twenty-Ninth is not on there.
Yeah, and, yeah, so if there are more than Twenty-Ninth, um, feel free to send, you know, take a second look at this and send those comments our way. But I think a lot of the, uh, you know-
That's really helpful, Ryan, I think that's-
Neighborhood bikeway facility, I think, are sort of showing up in that pink color.
So yeah, you can pick actually segments of those pink ones and put it in your CIP. Sorry, and add- Eventually, yeah.
Yes, just kind of reading out, I think I've heard it from the council.
Yes.
Okay, can we go on to-
Transit.
Transit?
Yeah.
I, um, well, go ahead. So I noticed in some places, we talk about, one part of the text talks about half a mile of transit, and one part of the text talks about quarter mile of transit. And so I wondered, you know, what, you know, what our target is. So, and where did the potential new bus lines come from?
TRIMET. They've been working, they're on our, they're on our technical committee, so anything that you see here has been proposed, is under discussion at TRIMET.
It is, okay.
I can pull, they have like a forty-year plan that has a rapid bus line, like they've got on Division that goes along King, but I'll pull that up, and I can send it to the council.
Well, they already got the funding to do, I mean, not a, yeah, they already supposedly have the funding to do an upgrade on King, to synchronize the lights and stuff.
But they are talking about bus rapid transit as a potential project in the future.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And they are talking about railroad, like, to me, railroad is like, we need international way, we don't need railroad. We need more service to our-
I think international way is the priority over railroad, if, if that's correct.
I, it's not showing on this.
I don't necessarily recall that. I, I know that there's a lot of interest in railroad, um, I think, uh, from, I guess I was just thinking about the conversation we had with Metro about railroad. But, yeah, international way has come up, and I will say that this is maybe the, uh, difference between uh, the proposed project list and the transit classification, uh, that we proposed, is the transit classification, I think, is maybe slightly more aspirational, like what, you know, the city would like to see from a sort of more complete, robust transit network. Uh, and I think the transit project list adheres more closely to what we see in TRIMET's plans. So, but we can, we can get more clarity on the international way, uh, versus railroad.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that's-
Well, that's the, the loopwork is punished a couple times, the misinterpretation of this map is, this does not have the existing transit. Overlay on it, this is just future. So international way already has a transit route.
A very infrequent.
Understood, yeah.
Not early, not late, it doesn't serve the needs of the businesses.
We're gonna get into bikes on the international.
We can try to understand better why that, you know, there isn't improved on international way.
Yeah, and nothing here goes to the Milwaukee Community Center or North High was park. Yeah. So I think you will probably hear some comments on that.
All right, we can always add this to the project list and work with TRIMET, but ultimately, it's their decision on ridership, right? They have to pick what they're gonna get for ridership, so. But if we have it in our plan, we can say that it's something that we're, you know, we would like to see in the future.
Yeah. And I also was curious that, because they added a little bit of uh, service to Lake Road this year in their transit changes, so now there's a, there's a stop near the junior high and stuff. And the, I remember the school district being excited, because, for their offices. And that's not called out on here as, I mean, I guess it's an existing route, so that was your point, that the existing routes aren't pop off. Yeah, okay, okay.
Is there, uh, I mean, does that, does that overlay of existing and, and, and wishful thinking exist anywhere in GIS system or anything like that?
We have, uh, we have all of those maps. We have the existing conditions. If you go back to, again, I think two meetings ago, where we, um, like, talked about existing conditions, you would see existing routes, um, in terms of, is it in GIS right now? Yeah.
Somewhere, I, I just can't, is there a way for someone, if we, you know, me or whoever, can, can look at the existing routes, and then put this as an overlay and say, each of the ones that we've tried, tried out, come to the table on?
We could send you this, yeah, absolutely.
I think you're asking maybe if there's some sort of interfacing, like there's, is there some more other public-facing way that we can show that?
Well, I just know Edry has all kinds of layers, so.
Oh, we have all kinds of layers, yeah, it's just a matter of like, how much we have on the internet, which is very little, except for this, um, survey that we have, because our, our GIS outward facing is not very robust, I would say. We have, but we have all the layers.
We have the layers, and we could put them all on one map.
I was saying that, you know, in this discussion.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, for sure.
I mean, it seems like some of your other-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Useful, useful.
I understand, totally.
Your heat map ones are so like, they seem like they're many layers, so this, this, this seems less complicated, I would think.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, I agree that that would be useful.
Yeah.
Anybody else on transit? Okay, on to the little stations. So, on your roadway and intersection projects, Figure Twelve, R thirteen, where do you find that? Oh, yeah, that's this new road that, for the NMIA, it looks like, being proposed.
Oh, yes.
Between the two rail lines.
Yeah.
And is that-
That's in the plan?
That's in the plan? That was in the old plan, or that's a new thing? I don't remember that in the old plan.
Yeah, it comes from the NMIA plan, and it is that existing route, um, that is not right-of-way. It, it runs, um, you know, it, it's private property, but it will connect you, um, from Harrison up through to Mailwell.
Oh, well, you can go up, oh, that's the existing way, that existing road?
Yeah.
But it's not right-of-way, so.
Oh, it's a privately owned, it's owned by the industrial?
I think there's sections of right-of-way, but largely it's private property.
So that has to develop to create that right-of-way as a permanent.
Oh, I see.
So we're leaving it in the plan, because if it ever does develop, then we'd be like, wait a minute, they're supposed to have a, through road here. We would have-
Okay, I didn't understand.
It's between the orange line and the, and the-
It's between where, the Willesburg Junction where they split the line that goes out, and then the lines that come down. And I knew you could go, I mean, I've driven that, I've driven up there, you go up twenty-six, I think, and you wind back. But um, it's not exactly the way this is drawn, I don't think, but um, because it does come down to Harrison. I was surprised, because I remember when they built, I, I mean, I remember that roads there, but somewhere, when they built the light rail, somewhere in that area, they found an old swimming pool. There had been, so I just was like, oh, there's all kinds of topography challenges, I think, in that area, but, um, interesting, okay.
A private pool or a public pool?
Uh, I don't know. I mean, it was old abandoned, there had been, you know, where those crystal-like apartments, that was like a, a swimming place. That was a public swimming place where people came to swim, yeah. It was a, it was a summer resort, it was a swimming, yeah, yeah, I know, yeah. Nice to see that at the museum, like, that's good pictures. Okay, I just was curious about that. Okay, any other comments, questions on roadways?
This one's a small one, but we did, in our classifications, that multimodal travel priority arterial, we extended down the length of King and Linwood, are we gonna extend that down Lake? Like, I know that's a major pedestrian thoroughfare.
What are you looking at?
Uh, on page WS forty-three, roadway classifications. It's not substantive to the projects themselves, but our classifications, I think, yeah. Yep, if you look at, so King is listed as a multimodal travel priority, and Linwood is, but not- Linwood is, but not Lake Road. A part of Lake Road is, the part within the town center.
I, I, let me just, from my perspective, I looked at that and I struggled with it a little bit. It's kind of both, right? I mean, it's regional in some cases because you can get from downtown Milwaukee all the way to the town center on Lake. So it's regional in that respect, but it's also local. So it's a little bit of both. There's probably not, it's not, it's not a simple bucket to stick it in. So it's a question of, you know, what do we feel is the most appropriate? Probably how to proceed. I don't think there's a right or wrong answer.
Well, I guess, you know, when I think about that, that's a good point is if it's connecting to a regional limiting like town center, then I guess I would default to regional, the local. I mean, I understand that, you know, they're both. But since it has, you know, a connection sort of outside the city limits, it seems like a, it seems like we classify the regional. I don't know. What are your thoughts?
So it would be that a through movement priority arterial? Is that what we're saying?
I think Councilor, it's been what she's saying, multimodal travel priority. It's like downgrade. It's not downgrading it, but just saying it wouldn't be completely designed to be a throughway.
Yep.
Even though people do use that, but the speeds are really low, the volume is pretty low at this point.
Bikes on that road too.
Yeah.
That's where all the kids walk to round middle school.
Once you got the school, yeah, the school's up there.
I think it's mostly, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jen, I think that it's, we could, we could, we could label it as that. I think that we know that that ultimately, there's already been a lot of improvements on Lake. And so that there would not be any improvements on Lake for quite some time. That would just fall to the bottom of the list because it's already been upgraded. But that doesn't mean that it can't be on the list to say, we've talked about this multiple times about, well, yeah, we'll keep it on the list as something that we want to do, but knowing that it's just going to not get prioritized with other things. I mean, there's so many competing needs.
I mean, yeah. And with the piece I really like this EPRG would be east of the middle school because that's where you lack sidewalks. That's where I'd like to see us actually take a road transfer from the county and bring that into the city and lower, and I'd like them to lower that speed limit, right? Like.
We, along Sheridan of Farms.
Yep. I think that whole area should be 30 miles per hour all the way down until we get closer to downtown where it transitions to like 25.
Yeah. And the functional classification wouldn't necessarily imply an immediate project. It would just be say, it would be signaling that this is what we intend for this roadway.
Anyways, I'm, I'm fine with whatever you want, but.
That's why I say it's not that, doesn't actually change anything, but that was the one thing I saw.
Nice.
Moving along.
One more?
Moving along.
Great, right?
Great. Now let's look. I, I mean, as long as you say you pulled in everything from the old plan, so that was all my concern. Because I do remember in those meetings, a lot of focus on, I actually, there was a call for like an overhead flyover kind of roundabout to get the people, some of the trucks onto 9090 and stuff. I mean, the freight people were pretty unhappy. Industrial users were pretty unhappy with sort of access. In 2007.
Yeah, I don't, we haven't heard that this time around. We've got two freight folks that have been on the committee. I will say that they've come to like one or two meetings and seen how we're talking so much about bicycles and pedestrians and they have not come back. But they've seen all the maps. They're all, I mean, they've, they've been continuing to get all of the materials and I've reached out to them. So we just haven't heard that, we just haven't heard much from the freight community, even with the two representatives, because we knew at the beginning of the project that we wanted to try to have conversations because to your point, Mary, there was those conversations back in the day, but I just, we haven't really heard anything.
So should we be doing a group there before we get to the end of this?
I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. We just, from the two folks that talked to freight people, they did not come with issues to the table. I don't, I can't, I don't know that they speak for all of those, those folks. We just did not hear anything at all from those folks.
Almost every project on the figure 15 comes from the MBEA plan. So it's, to the extent that that's still a valid plan, I think we're covered in some extent, but it's not a fresh look, I would argue.
Well, and I don't necessarily, I'm not necessarily saying it has to be a fresh look because I do think between that and 2007, TSP, things have been aired, but nothing has changed in those things that we repaved and went wrong. But there was a lot of concern about, you know, some maneuverability, intersection things and, and, yeah.
Question. So in, in the north industrial area, all of the little offshoot roads are labeled as truck access streets, but that's not the same on international way. Is that something that you will, would tweak at all? Or does that have no suspense on whatever plans we might make? In the functional class? Yep.
That's a good question.
All right, we're moving. We're looking at maps.
Because even though, I think to what you just said, even though that might not change our projects right now, I think it's good to label those streets in that way so that lets freight users advocate the interest that they like on those streets.
Could be a mapping limitation at the moment. We not, we not even have all those little spur streets off of international map on here. And we got.
Or are they private?
Yeah, or are they private? So.
We can look.
We can take a second one.
Aren't a lot of those in the, in the industrial area? Something just sort of add in and a, and a, and a warehouse loading dock?
Yeah, they might be private. It might, so it might.
The ones north of, yeah.
Well, this one, this longest one that goes north from international way, this kind of L backward L shape, that's Mallard, I think. And that serves quite a number of businesses. It's not just like, well, one business get in. It serves quite a number of businesses.
And can I just understand, why is Johnson Creek, our portion of it, weight restricted? Is that the quality of the street is such that we need to weight restrict it or?
I don't know that answer.
That way.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna.
But it's been that way for a long time, I think.
Questions never come up since I've been working here, so I haven't liked it to it.
Yeah.
It comes from your current TSP physics. I don't think anyone in the room knows.
Wow.
The details of it.
But that's up by 42nd. That's where we weight restricted?
Yeah, 42nd over to Johnson Creek. Oh, sorry, 30th to Johnson Creek. That whole stretch is weight restricted. And I, I mean, in the legislature, we're talking so much about bridges that are weight restricted because of, in like bad condition. So I'm wondering, is there some conditional improvement we'd have to do to?
I mean, that is a collector from Portland's perspective, street on their section. So they don't even make it an arterial, which means that would weight restrict it, being in a collector instead of an arterial.
Interesting. All right.
Yeah. Well, it's not.
Well, I will tell you that.
Everybody else does.
Knowing some of the neighbors who live within the stretch, they probably like the idea that fewer trucks are coming.
Yeah, yeah.
I would hundred percent agree. They think of it as a local road.
Yeah.
To be, I had to let, I go, actually, that's quite a local road.
Was that that little street that has like three houses and a beauty salon on it or a bear salon on it? Is that the one I'm thinking of?
It's the one that's getting a meditation center.
Meditation center, okay.
Wait, off of Johnson Creek?
Yeah, they just said.
I'm thinking about it. I'm thinking about it. It's getting weird.
Okay. All right. Counselor Stavodore, anything you want to chime in before we adjourn? Move to executive.
Oh, I'm good. Thank you. All right. I just do one last slide, one last slide. I just want to give everybody an update on the public outreach that we've been doing. So we went to the Noche Latina event on May 16th. We also had some folks go to the El Fuente parent teacher organization to pitch the event coming up and the Engage Milwaukee. Brian and I were at the farmer's market with Counselor Anderson and we saw Counselor Massey there as well on this, the 8th. We've got the community workshop coming up.
Tomorrow.
We have, sorry?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. It's tomorrow night. Everybody, so many people out there listening now. Tomorrow night, come to the library at 6 o'clock to 7:30 and you can dig into the maps. And the other thing that we've been doing is we've been kind of deputizing the NDA leadership folks that are on the advisory committee. So we have given them all of these maps along with the projects and they are going, they've already started going out to their NDAs and talking and showing all of these maps to the NDAs. So they're doing that. We're doing that this month and next month. Public Safety Committee meeting, Jen is there on the 26th. I am going to the Equity Steering Committee meeting on the 26th. And then we also have three focus groups that we're working on. The BIHOP, we're working with Gabriella, trying to recruit for that. Hillside Manor, we're recruiting for that. And the Wichita Milwaukee Center, we've been working with both of those organizations to recruit folks. So we're planning on having, we've already got the dates scheduled. We're capping those at 20 people. Hopefully we will get 20 people each. We do have a cash incentive to participate in those focus groups. So we're hoping to get something there. So this is really like our big push, trying to make sure that we've got all the projects on the list. And one of the things that we, we will be doing through Engage Milwaukee and we go out to the focus groups is saying, okay, here are all the projects. What's your priority? Give me your top five priority projects so that we can kind of feed that into how we're going to prioritize everything. So June, July, big push. And then the next slide, we'll tell you what's coming after that. And so hopefully we will have the final project list in August. We will vet that through and do the evaluation or do the prioritization. I think that we're going to be doing that and we'll have that in August with the, with the technical committee meeting. So you all will get that first in August. And the advisory committee and planning commission can get there. But ultimately, we're working towards adopting the TSP by the end of the year slash January. We were able to get an extension on our grant with ODOT. We're supposed to be wrapped up in September, but now we have to. January. Lucky us. It's a hard stop this time. So anyway.
We gotta remove bit work for this last.
Right. Yeah. We just got the word today that we cannot go past.
That's very inspirational.
Right. Yeah. Thank you. If you all have any comments in the, in the interim, before we see you next, shoot them over to Ryan and I so that we can just put them in the list queue of all the things that we're going to try to.
A lot of really good work here. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It's been fun, actually. I'm, I'm, I've been enjoying it with the advisory committee going out, talking to folks. We've got such a great advisory committee. They're really dedicated. They show up, they've looked at the stuff. I mean, I just, it's, it's been a great project in that regard.
You're killing it. Thank you.
Oh, I have to read. Yes, I do. Okay. Work session, council will meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 192.66002I to review and evaluate the employment related performance of the chief executive officer of any public body, a public officer, employee or staff member who does not request an open hearing. And with that, the work session is adjourned and we will move into the executive session.
Thank you, conference room. Catherine's in there.